Just you, Bailey.
Here.
Yes, Sarah. Linda Johnson here. My love now.
Here.
Charlie Manning. Her phone. Did we hear from either one of them or did they mention?
Uh huh.
Okay, they might just be late, but you're right here right now. Um, public comment, at this time, anybody can speak for up to three minutes. Is there anybody online that would like to speak in video and Zoom? Anybody in the room? No, no public comment.
The director, Joe Manning, Harvey.
Final one, no worries. First, I'm on the agenda since the approval of the December. That you have to look through them. I did. The only thing I saw was Hydro under the trustee reports. Was uh, it was misspelled, Hydro, under, review, possibly take action on the Hydro Corporation book. It should be H Y D R O, it was H D R Y, unless I'm reading that wrong.
Yeah, no, I totally spell it.
It is how they spell it. Okay, so, never mind. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December 12th.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Compose. Let's see. We're right into new business, public works, he believes in environment, a short update from. Just me.
Had a brief meeting. And we covered just one topic, which was from. As with stuff with. Parkway. Private property, Johnson, metals corporation, very small. We had an active discussion around that. So it was not in the interest of the village to pursue the. To, there was a motion that was to. Status quo, but. To maintain the status quo, which has been that the village has voluntarily cleared the path in the winter time. Since clearing branches and such from the pathway as well. Also wanting to have. Advisor prepare a estimate for what those services would cost to present to the. Study, we discovered that it was about $3,000 annually. So that's the status. Proposal to present.
Will that come to the board?
Will come after the committee initially. If it's appropriately go forward to more guests, it would have to be. If it were approved then.
So, they'll go back with the committee. Then the board, and then what else?
Essentially.
Just writing this down.
In the meantime, we're going to continue the status quo, which is voluntarily. Clearing that, you know, when you're trying to take care of branch falls.
And is women, have they been talking to you about this? Have you somebody besides, you know, people that are on board?
It has, it has been discussed at the committee level, probably other occasions.
Has anybody from the women's board been, you know?
Prior board members, just resident.
Jim Cole. Pardon me?
Jim Cole is there.
Oh, okay. I was just curious.
This is a recent contact, Travis, correct me if I'm mistaken. It was a.
Carrie from.
It was kind of a modified version of a document that hasn't existed. Had not been reviewed for enough by any legal counsel. General legal counsel.
Good evening and happy new year. Hi, everyone. Today, you'll see that there are some new, some different reports you've never seen before with the graph. I'm going to start doing this at the end of each year. I'd like to put together an actual official report for the previous year, starting in April. So it'll be the April after the year, because it takes a lot of time to put together some of this information. But I'd like to just kind of point your eyes to that first page in the packet where it's the property status and what was sent to the property room for the previous year. And there's some notable things for our village is, you know, 18 seizures of drugs and narcotics and that were property inventoried. Four firearms were seized up, violators. And then it goes down. So if you're interested in taking a look at that, or if you have any questions, let me know. So, there's more items. Those are just the case numbers that were, so say it's case number one, and I inventory seven things. It's still just going to count as the one, at least in this graph. So, but you'll see the, the numbers there. It depends on the case. So it depends, we have to adhere to the state's adherence of the property control. So depending on the case, the adjudication of a case, or the continuation of a case, we either retain, or, and then years later, we dispose. Yeah. And then the second set, you'll see the actual annual incident summary list. So this is the, you'll see the total number, 2,394. And then the incident summary list. So you'll get a good idea of what we're up to for at least the first year. So you'll see that missing it, everything from mental subject, missing adult, to traffic hazard, traffic and violations, et cetera. So if anybody has any questions on that.
I was curious, I noticed that, I don't know if it's happened, as there was sexual assault that was mentioned.
So there is a sexual assault and then a sexual assault report. So it'd be a total two.
And I'm not interested in the details of that as much as where that occurred. So the incident may have occurred, was it in a residence, was it in a public area? Maybe.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just a little cautious of that. So I just, I would just respectfully just say, within the village. So. Uh, any other questions? Uh, no, so, as explained, Devin, we will be introduced here in a minute, can attest to the. Whenever there's a shots fired in the area, the three corner area is what we call it, because it's the village of Caledonia, the village of Windpoint, the city of Racine, Three Mill in, in Maine. That area is notorious for shots fired incidents. So depending on who's available, who's in that area, they'll, they'll put the call into all three agencies to check the area. So this was having the, if there was a shots fired incident within the village, you'd be notified of an actual shots fired incident. So this is us just checking the area on that three corners. Or assisting another agency with their shots fired call. So, we applied for and received the grant this last month, performed $64 in Wisconsin Department of Transportation. That's going to pay for the equipment to calibrate our portable breath test. So that was a. At least calibrate the portable breath test. So for OWI investigation, drunk drivers, underage drinking, et cetera. Thanks to DPW, they'd completed some maintenance in our second squad, replacing the brakes, rotors, and rotation, and oil change. So thanks for that, saved us a few dollars. The new squad should be up and running within the next week. So it's getting its final touches. We just got a photograph, everything's almost done. We have two officers that are going to be sent in February to attend the active threat conference in the Wisconsin Dells. It's a conference that's put on. By several organizations, but it's heavily attended by Wisconsin law enforcement agencies. So there are, are two instructors here. So they're going to be instrumental for helping us in February when we're doing our class with emergency management on our emergency operation plan. And our active threat scenario training. Are, the reports were up to date with the state. All of our reports are completed and the tasks have been completed, so that we're in compliance with the state. Uh, and then last, anybody have any questions on that? Any of that? Last but not least, Devin Jander is here. He has been hired as our newest police officer. One of our officers left the state, moved to Texas for family. So, yeah, Devin's a city police officer for Racine, been there since 22, attended for like high school. Devin and I go way back. So he's going to be a great asset. He also works at Horlick High School off duty as a school resource officer. So three jobs to, to my two. And then we're going to administer, we, we've never done this in the past, and I know that we used to do an officer and a piece of equipment. It's very tough for the part-time agency to get somebody to come in and show face. So what we're going to do from now on is every time we actually have a new officer, we're going to actually spread them in part of the board. And then obviously the introduction. About this, thank you. You're going to stand over here by the flag, make the official, right? Sure, yeah, raise your hand. I repeat after me. I, the undersigned.
I, the undersigned.
Who have been appointed to the position of police officer.
Who have been appointed to the position of police officer.
For the village of Windpoint Police Department.
For the village of Windpoint Police Department.
But have not entered upon.
But not have entered upon.
The duties thereof.
Duties thereof.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully. Partially discharge the duties of police officer.
Discharge the duties of police officer.
For the village of Windpoint.
For the village of Windpoint.
For the best of my ability.
For the best of my ability.
So we got.
So we got.
Congratulations.
Appreciate that. Yes.
Thank you. We got some good part of the. Devin, if you want.
Sure. Nice meeting you all. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I could do some work, sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this president's report, honestly, I really don't have anything other than the fact. I turned in my paperwork to run, and Linda and Charlie turned in their paperwork. So we're going to have an open seat. We, I know Linda and I were, and Elizabeth was trying to encourage other people to run for the trustee seat. And. Obviously, we were not persuasive enough. So we will have an open trustee seat, so that will have to be taken care of after the election. That's, that's something to keep in mind. And there's something to, that's. Unless there's a write-in. Right, unless there's a write-in. And if they do a write-in, they still have to get the 20 signatures and file, do all the same things. Their, their name will just have to be put on the ballot with somebody's pen rather than. So that's an option too, so.
What if there's no, no formal write-in, but five people writing the same name?
The two of us.
No, it has to be a declared candidate that has to file within the clerk's office. So they have to file with us.
So if, 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 let's say, a group of neighbors just decided to vote for one of their neighbors, even if, let's say, the person didn't know about it, because they knew they were the person, by, they only got five votes, those votes are useless, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, you still have to file all the same paperwork, as if you were going to be on the ballot.
Would be a dirty trip. They all have to. Thank you for that.
Well, that's, that's really all I have. If you know anybody. Now we can move right on, because I know you've probably got a lot of stuff. So I have no idea what you have, and I'm sure you have a lot.
Um, last month's special election went really well. Thank you to all the staff and poll workers who helped to make the day run very smooth, had an 18.5% turnout, even with the snowstorm that hit. Welcome to 2025. It's been a busy first week back. We had a meeting with Lers this week on the village's financial planning. Uh, the rate case should be completed by middle of June. It takes about six months for the PSC to go through their public hearing and for the review. Um, so the rate case should be fully finalized. They don't anticipate any problems, but the prorated numbers will be going out. Um, in the first quarter here for the water bills from last quarter's increase. So. Uh, and then we went over the financial planning of the village's capital projects for the borrowing capacity for the village. Um, and then a contract will be submitted to the PFIC committee at the end of the month. Uh, for the help of that, with along the financial management plan for the village's five-year outlook of capital financing and for. Its assets and total general fund and other finances of the village to look, uh, look at long-term other options for the village's deficit that's currently being looked at by Lers. So that contract will be at the PFIC level. Uh, the new website has been a work in progress. Uh, thank you to Monica and Hannah and I. Uh, for going to this great training that took two hours long. Um, so it was a very long training to get this website done. But it is going to be launched next Wednesday, uh, between the hours of 10 and noon, hopefully with no issues. Um, so keep a lookout for that. Uh, very excited. Um, and the departments are also looking to make sure that they have everything that they need for their parts on their departments. So. Uh, property tax season's underway. It's been very busy in the office. Um, we are working on sending our transfers over to the different entities here shortly. Then the Plan Commission meets again on Monday at 5:30, PFIC's at 10, and Parks is at 3 on the 27th for their February meetings. Communications will be meeting on the 4th at 2 PM, and Scott has let me know that Public Works will be meeting, so take note of that. Um, and we'd like to welcome back Scott. And, um, like President McCollough said, we only had one. Uh, she's the only one who filed to run for village president, and trustee Johnson and Manning are the only two filed to run for trustee. And those papers have been submitted to the county as well. So we are all caught up on tasks at our, at the office. So that's all we got.
Can I ask a question on the website? On the web address? Is it going to be the same?
Yep.
Okay, so no change with that?
No.
So we'll just click on windpoint.org and all of a sudden we'll have this beautiful new website.
Yep.
I'm so excited. I'm so excited. Okay, um, Plan Commission, okay, so. A continuation of the last. Um, we review and take action on ordinance 25-01, and ordinance repealing chapter 36 zoning of the municipal code and adapting and. Chapter 36 zoning of the municipal code. So. This is where I just go, okay, Jeff, is this what I, what am I supposed to do at this point?
How about a motion?
We, we, we don't need to go through anymore, because we've already done all that, right? Gone through the ordinances and. It had a hearing, so we just need to make a motion for this ordinance?
Uh, sure, unless the village board trustees have any specific questions, it's kind of locked in right now. Now, if the village board has concerns about any section of the ordinance and you want to revisit it, that's perfectly acceptable. We just have to schedule another public hearing. So once that public hearing concluded, the only changes to chapter 36 draft that can be made are changes directly tied to testimony provided during the hearing. Unless it's something called a Scribner's error, a typo, and we actually corrected one of those earlier today. Um, but that said, if, if any of you have any issues, any concerns with the ordinance as it is, there are really two options. Um, one is to adopt the ordinance now, that is before you, and then address those issues as text amendments. A simple amendment to the text of the ordinance that would require another public hearing at some point in the future. Um, or basically send it back to the Plan Commission for revisions in a, in a follow-up public hearing. So those are the two options available. Adopting it as it is, and then we'll absolutely positively over the next six months or so, find some things that we want to change. So you will see this again. Um, or if you're not comfortable adopting it tonight, then it goes back to Plan Commission. Forgive the, by the way, I have a cold and happy 2025, everyone.
This is a point of clarification that we can, if we move forward and adopt it, and so forth, we can still ask questions or get clarification by. Didn't participate in any public meetings the first.
Absolutely.
Question, not challenging, just ask a question for clarification.
Yes, sir, that's correct. So you're not, you're not bound to only adopting or not adopting the ordinance tonight. You could, we can engage in any conversation related to the ordinance that you, that you would like.
Yeah, it's everybody had the opportunity to go.
Hours. Thank you, Jeff.
I can't imagine what you want.
Right, so I was going to thank whoever's on that committee because.
Also, Plan Commissions are four, right? Plan Commissions are there to do all the work, and then the village board gets all the glory.
Yeah. Yeah. If you're comfortable, adopting.
If you deserve, should ask these questions first.
That's why I didn't know if it was before or after. I'm happy with it after. It's just. I'll have one after. Yeah. I think we should.
Okay. Then do I have a moment?
To adopt the new ordinance.
To repeal chapter 36 and adopt and recreate a new chapter 36?
That's right. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Discussion, when do we do the discussion?
On the discussion before we vote?
Discussion before we vote.
Before we vote?
Okay.
Okay. Hold the vote.
Caught me, caught me off guard.
Sorry about that. We can discuss right now before.
So I'm, I'm one of the people that live in a. It's not the quality of the home, that's the zoning. And.
Right, that's that.
There, there are provisions in there for certain amounts of clothing, food, animals, certain amounts of food, animals, nothing on apiaries. So I'm running apiary, and the last thing I need is a call from. And then say.
You have one? You have an apiary?
Yeah, yeah, that's how. Bee hives.
Oh, I haven't found.
We have others. We, we allow bees.
Is it in there?
Yeah.
Is it?
Bees, yeah, bees.
Sorry, I was. I'm.
And so are those.
Is he a sport dog? And chickens are also.
Chickens are also.
No rooster, no rooster. That, that's cool. So chickens are A1 and R1?
I don't know. Our one is, um. Not permitted, it's. It's permitted. It's confirmed.
Yeah. Chicken permit.
Chicken.
So keeping of bees. I'm sorry. Uh, keeping of bees and keeping of chickens are conditional uses in the R1, R2, and R3 district. So anybody starting with the adoption of this ordinance who keeps chickens or keeps bees consistent with those sections, sections, must have a conditional use permit, must apply for a conditional use permit. As far as the A1 district, that's an agricultural district, that livestock is permissible in an agricultural district. So backyard chickens and keeping of bees is, is use specific to a residential district. And in some cases, a commercial district for the bees. But not in the village.
So in an egg zone parcel, you can or can't have chickens and bees?
An agricultural zone parcel can have any agriculture, any livestock consistent with chapter 91, so long as compliant with dimensional standards like animal units per acreage and stuff like that. So the short answer is yes. If you have an egg parcel, chickens and bees, and you're not limited to the number that the R1, R2, and R3 district are limited to.
So you're fine. But if Carmen wants bees.
I'll help him out.
He'll have to go get the conditional use permit.
Okay.
So.
And how many bees is?
You know, there's, uh.
Two? Is it hives? And how do they even?
Yeah.
It's five.
Yeah, and you know, when it comes to that with Paul and Charlie.
They're hard to count.
So the maximum number of hives on a residential lot is two.
Is each one of those things a hive or is it?
A hive can be a single, or you can start on a stack. Around here, given this nature of the climate, we don't have. Eight months of bee living. We have maybe six. We will rarely get over what they call a super. So you have the hive, and then the next box is a super.
Okay, because I do see them around, you know, in Caledonian stuff, and I don't know how much of that, so. How many, if they look like the worst, maybe one of them.
Boxes.
The boxes. So like, is one box a hive? Or is it?
One or two boxes, maybe three. I've never seen one, you, you have your hive.
Can we?
Well, okay, we don't need to get into detail. I mean, the answer to your question about.
You don't want to count them. It's going to be 10,000.
Okay. And then, do you have questions?
I did. Yeah, so I was interested in lighting and understanding lighting, as I read through all of the. Plan, uh, ordinance, referred to lighting at. Carving lots, for instance, or lighting for the commercial entities with signage. And it can't be, uh, you know, extremely bright, essentially, and that has to be pointed down to. What I'm, my question has to do with decorative lighting, and that doesn't seem to be handled under landscaping. I just couldn't find it if it's there, but this would have to do with seasonal lighting. And if there are any, anything's in the, the document that refer to seasonal lighting, which would be holiday lighting, most usually. That's the Christmas time, but you know, it can be Thanksgiving, could be. Halloween, could be for Valentine's Day, could be for St. Patrick's Day, you name it.
My birthday?
And, yeah, there, there seems.
March 11th, by the way.
I'm aware of a situation where we've got, you know, lighting up in perpetuity for six months. And if there's anything that covers residential lighting that's decorative, that isn't landscape lighting, that seems to be excessive. And so I just wondered about that.
Sure, great question. Um, there's a simple answer to one part of it and an incredibly nuanced bordering on ridiculously complicated answer to the other part. So the simple part is when you're talking about non-residential development. That goes through the process of site plan review. Um, somebody proposes a new business, they have to go through the process. There's a photometric plan that's required. That photometric plan has to demonstrate that the light will not spill over the property in any measurable way. Uh, it has to demonstrate that the lighting does not pose a hazard to vehicles or any other, um, any other off-site impacts. So that's the simple part. Residential development, there is, there effectively are no requirements in the zoning ordinance for residential lighting that's typically addressed within a nuisance ordinance. Um, in other words, it falls under police powers, not under zoning regulations. Um, and that would be pertaining to someone who puts a really, really bright backyard light or porch light on. Zoning ordinances can't regulate that. That's a, again, that's a police powers issue within nuisance ordinance. With, this is the complicated part. With respect to holiday lighting, holiday lighting is a constitutionally protected expression of free, free, free speech rights under the First Amendment. So any regulation of lighting, like holiday lighting, whatever those holidays may be, or event lighting. Has to go through the same jurisdictional criteria or judicial criteria as signage does. Um, the Supreme Court has considered signage in two recent cases. They have punted on the issue of lighting and on public art, both of which are also free speech. Um, so we're awaiting a decision, a case that'll go before the Supreme Court, probably within the next two or three years. What does that mean for the village of Windpoint? Um, be careful how you regulate. Uh, exterior lighting associated with holidays. If it's, um, again, if it's somebody who puts a floodlight on their property that's affecting a neighbor, that's a police matter. That's something where the police department could issue a citation, um, whether it be for harassment or negligence, or just, um, you know, inappropriate offsite impacts. But when it comes to people who put lights up, if the village regulates those, I would recommend you have Attorney Larson take a close look at those standards before. I would recommend you have Attorney Larson take a close look at those standards before you enforce them. It's very, very complicated.
So my question about seasonal holiday lighting, if that's how it's categorized, is there is nothing?
Absolutely. That's correct. There's nothing in the zoning ordinance regulating seasonal lighting.
Find it. So I, I, I was diligent and confirmed that there is nothing. Thank you.
Yes, sir, you did. You did, and you have.
Question, questions? I have, I have a concern. Okay, um, and it's actually on the very first in the introduction part, under intent. It states the sector is intended for both health, safety, morals, and the general welfare of village at Windpoint. Was that meant to be morals or morale?
Morals. Yeah.
I have a problem.
It's the original verbiage.
So that, that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I have a problem with it. I'm like, what does?
Well, let me, let me explain. Uh, that, so that language exists in every single zoning ordinance in the state of Wisconsin, verbatim. Um, it has been adjudicated over a hundred and twenty-three years of, I'm sorry, a hundred and three years of zoning regulation in the state of Wisconsin. Every zoning ordinance, every subdivision ordinance says that exact same language. It might be wordsmithed a little bit or laid out different, but it does. Um, so the morals from a legal standpoint means to protect the integrity and the community character effectively. So if somebody were to do something that runs absolutely contrary to the character of the community, so long as it's not a protected expression of First Amendment rights, um, it's allowable. Or I'm, I'm sorry, it's, um, you could, it's preventable. You can't, the village can't regulate, it can't prevent profanity in terms of signage. Um, you can pre, prevent obscenity in signage, for instance. Um, you can't prohibit adult entertainment, but you can regulate adult entertainment. Those are the standards that have played out over, again, a century of zoning laws in the United States.
Very explanation. I'm still not comfortable with it, but that's.
Do not be the first person who's expressed discomfort with that.
I, I just, I don't, I don't ever like to get into the habit of managing anybody's morals. And when it's in there, it's like, what? What does that have to do? I understand what you're saying.
I, and just to clarify in a vague way, the morals, they would not apply to our individual morals, what we determine as moral. That's not what that means. It's a, it's a community-based standard. And every community has different, for instance, the morality, for, for lack of a better word, in the double point is probably different than the morality in the city of Las Vegas, Nevada, right? Different community standards, different community norms. That's essentially what it says. Or that's how, what.
All in favor?
Aye.
Or opposed? Abstained. Okay, motion passes.
If I may jump in just for, uh, the process from here on out, just so everybody understands what's going to happen next. Um, at some point, probably within the next three or four working days, um, Travis and Monica will post something called the publication notice. It'll go into the papers and it'll basically publish the fact that the board of trustees of the village of Windpoint approved the repeal and recreation of chapter thirty-six. Now, the fact that you did it tonight means that the current chapter thirty-six no longer has legal authority. And the new chapter thirty-six does, and that happened the moment you just voted. Um, but there is a formality of publication that is required. And then the last thing is there's something called an adoption ordinance, and that's, again, it's just a formality that we'll put together probably end of this, well, end of this week is tomorrow, probably early next week. Um, I've been in the process of creating updated application forms for the new ordinance. I think I have three more to go. Um, and that'll be off to staff for review. Application forms are not reviewed by the village board or the plan commission, they're staff level only. Um, and basically it lays out the process for submitting an application for all the things that you'd apply for under the current zoning ordinance. Again, once we start implementing, excuse me, implementing the ordinance, we will find things that we want to change. And when I say we, I mean you as a village board, plan commission members and staff. Um, we've addressed a lot of things in the new ordinance, um, certainly signage and fence aids and a number of other things. Uh, but there will be other stuff that pops up, and what we'll do is we'll kind of keep a running list of housekeeping amendments, and then at some point, when it gets to a certain volume, or perhaps a certain critical issue arises, we'll bring those before the Plan Commission for consideration. And eventually, again, before the village board as text amendments. So a text amendment would be just a specific amendment to a specific section of the ordinance, not the kind of repeal and recreation that we've just done. Many of you are probably familiar with that, so I apologize if I'm walking a path that you've trod well. Um, just want you to be aware of what's, what's going to happen next.
Thank you, Jeff.
And zoning, where I should have mentioned too, the zoning map was adopted when you just adopted the ordinance as well. So they're part and parcel. And the Plan Commission picked a very lovely zoning map for you, so.
Can I ask a question on the map, or is that inappropriate?
No, absolutely. It's, we're still on the agenda item.
So the zoning map, as I saw, at the point of interest more than anything else, there's a parcel, um, drive by, you know, three mile, if you will, that's, uh, Johnson Wax property. It's three parcels. It's, uh, appears to be a, you know, where the council is, there was a residential parcel there that was acquired by them, and then there's appears to be close to a, a pathway. And those are all, I think, under one entity. I just wanted clarification. Okay. Okay, go down. Um, so it's, it's red, yellow, and blue. The brown is the agricultural, which was the, the property that get that. Uh, so it's the, the, uh, a square, if you will, by the, yeah, in the middle there, and then the yellow and the blue, there's no way of knowing. Those are zonings, and so I guess you ownership is kind of what I was asking for confirmation of. But it, all three of those, I think, are owned by the same entity. Maybe, maybe not. I don't know. But, uh, I would have thought that that would all be zoned the same, but, uh, obviously it depends on how it was acquired and the history, yeah. In that way, that was my question. I just thought I'd, I'd get a brief.
Sure, I mean, I, I may have, the, your mic was breaking up a little bit, so I'll give a shot at answering and let me know if I miss anything. Um, there are some issues with zoning in the village of Windpoint that um, at some point will need to be addressed, but probably on a case-by-case basis, not on a, you know, prescriptive basis or a preventive basis. So there are some dual-zone parcels in the village. In other words, a parcel that has multiple zoning classifications. Um, that's never a good thing, um, for reasons that we could discuss if you'd like. Um, but generally municipalities don't address those until somebody applies for a permit that requires the village to address it. Um, all of the zoning districts that are shown on the map, ir, regardless of the color, are based upon the data that Racine County has pertaining to zoning in the village, which means it's the legal zoning map. Now, it is very possible that in the past, the village of Windpoint have approved a zoning change, but it never went through the get to the county and have the county do the formal approval process, which is required, and therefore it wasn't recorded. So it's possible, probably even likely, that there's a parcel on the map that I'm looking at right now that says it's zoned one thing and it's actually still zoned another thing. And we generally don't find that out until, uh, you know, someone proposes to do something and then we bump into that. So that whatever the errors are on the zoning map are associated with Racine County's zoning category associated with each one of those parcels. And we will s, absolutely address those when they arise. Um, beyond that, really, the, the main decision of the Plan Commission was choosing the color combinations, you know, whether you wanted you know, primary colors or pastels or whatever the case may be. And that's a, that's a personal preference, I would say. But I'm not sure if that adequately answered your question.
I was struggling.
As far as individual parcels, though, you know, I may own three or four budding parcels, um, each of which are zoned different depending upon what my desires were in the past when I requested a zoning change. Or pre-design.
Yeah, I had issues with some of the colors. I'm like, okay, blue is water, but it's not on the map. All right, thank you again. Okay, are we ready for consent and receive and file items?
We are. I just done the financial reports. I know we got those yesterday afternoon. I get a chance to dive into them until this afternoon, so I'm gonna just request that we leave those out. Right now Travis, there are probably about ten, twelve questions I've got on those. Um, so I really don't want to put those in. That's okay.
Okay.
To tidy up. Not that there's anything wrong, it's just there's, like, twenty twenty-three, you've got some numbers missing. Um, the ARCA funds shouldn't be listed. There was, that was just a, from one account to another, so, you know, no procedures.
They're, they're just not books. I mean, Monica's still working on things. So not everything's in there. That's why it's missing. So it's just a rough estimate, so. There, it's just giving you a, a quick overlook. Uh, uh, nothing's final. She's still writing twenty-four checks and everything, so.
We'll leave the financials out until next month.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah.
I'll stop by.
Because it won't stop any, I mean, she'll do whatever. I mean, it's just for you to look at briefly, so.
I, I do have a question that's not about a specific number, but it's about, uh, income statements that are included. I just separate rid of it. There appear to be income statements for the stormwater service, the water. And then there appears to be one that combines them. Are there three or?
Well, there's the regular village, there's the, uh, water utility, and then there's the stormwater.
Right.
But it looked like they possibly could have been one inside of the other way, red.
Okay, so that was my.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, 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 so.
It almost looked to me like there were two separate, you know, stormwater and water utility, and then there's a third one, but that didn't have to.
Yeah, Monica, next weekend, because obviously tomorrow is your.
Thanks. Thank you.
So we'll leave that one out. Uh, so I will make a motion to consent, receive, and file the following items, then, uh, court reports, December twenty twenty-four, police reports, December twenty twenty-four, fire and EMS reports, December twenty twenty-four, and building permit report, December twenty twenty-four.
One second. Anybody second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, with the motion, uh, meeting is adjourned at five forty-three.